Thank you. I'm going to mute all and ask that everyone please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our flag as I call this meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Ann, if you could proceed with our roll call.
Sure, Ms. Thompson.
Present.
Ms. Sigal Morris.
Here.
Mr. McCann. Mr. Finer.
Present.
Mr. Bria.
Here.
Mr. Curtin.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That was six. And I think John just popped on, right? You're here?
Oh.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, so that makes seven. It constitutes a quorum. Let's move right into our agenda. First item is community announcements. And I will open this up to council if there's any item that they would like to share for the good of the public at this time.
Yes, we should have all received this in our council emails, but just a reminder that the Girl Scout bridging ceremony is this Saturday, I believe, May 23rd. Is that Saturday? Let me double check. It's Sunday at 5:00 PM at Memorial Park, which is at 1950 Woodside Road. Members of council, members of the public are welcome to attend, but members of council are welcome to come and say a few words. So just let Sandy Run Service Unit know if you'll be attending. We'll be doing letters of recognition for the gold and silver awardees as we normally do. So be on the lookout for an email for those, but hopefully some of us can attend. I will be there.
Thank you, council member Thompson. If any other items for the community announcement category tonight? And I'll make that offer to the public as well. Any events, community oriented you wish to share, please use the raise hand feature. I don't see any. Before we proceed, I'll make one, which is that in light of the loosening guidelines and certainly the new CDC guidelines that we've seen around masking and social distancing, council is very strongly looking at bringing us back to an in-person setting starting with our first meeting in June. I'm going to try to confirm one way or the other by the beginning of next week. We are still looking at what are some potential hybrid methods we could put into place for those meetings to accommodate those who still would be unable to join us in person. But stay tuned. If we don't make it for that first June meeting, I anticipate that it would be shortly after. So for our regular attendees, just keep an eye on the agendas and the instructions. At one point or another, you will see the instructions to turn up in person at Borough Hall rather than by Zoom. And with that, I will close community announcements. Moving on, we do have an item I wanted to share under correspondence this evening. This relates to discussion that we began at our last council meeting regarding, again, with those COVID restrictions loosening, we entered the discussion around the tents that we have, the parking restrictions we've been waving, what timeline does the borough need to be on as we move things back to normal. We did receive one communication from the owner of the Continental Tavern, which I will not read in full. It was distributed to all the council members, but I do just want to summarize because I think it raises some very valid points that council needs to consider for the businesses as we move back to normal. And in summary, I stated the Continental Tavern has not increased indoor seating since the rules have been relaxed, and asking further that the change will not be overnight. He also points out that, like many of the restaurants in towns, the physical chairs and tables that are being used in the outdoor setting are in fact the ones that would normally be inside. So if we ever concerned about capacity, you know, that's something to keep in mind, that restaurants don't necessarily have all of this equipment. He points out that because we are able to offer outdoor seating, provides important solace to patrons who have some discomfort with coming in person. 2020, as we all know, was a pretty dismal year for restaurants and the hospitality industry as a whole, who lost revenue and certainly don't expect to see that replaced just in one year. See the other relevant points in here. Well, outdoor dining contributed significantly to the survival. You know, it's now contributing significantly to the recovery of these local restaurants, going on to ask that we do not jeopardize that recovery. And the summary point was the request that we, as a council, keep those relaxations in place. His ask was through Thanksgiving. The point being that once the weather gets colder, you know, folks are not going to be outside anyhow. So that's just one data point from one restaurant owner. You know, that offer still stands to all of our businesses in town. Council welcomes feedback regarding the timeline of going back to normal. We know that we're certainly not there yet. Nobody's suggesting that starting June 1 or starting immediately, we need to get rid of all those tents and go inside, but it is something we need to plan for. So I look for more communication from our businesses as we go on. Does any other member of council have an item they want to share for correspondence this evening? All right, I don't see any, so we'll close that portion of the meeting as well. And we will move on to public comment, which I know many of you are here for this evening. So I will give the introduction and instructions now. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given an opportunity to do so during that business item's particular deliberation. Members of the public are pleased asked to state their full name and address for the record, and public comments must be kept to three minutes. That is important when we have many of you, which I am anticipating tonight. I will try to give you all a 30-second warning, but we need to stay on that three-minute mark because we do have other business items to get to. If you wish to be recognized for public comment, I ask you please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're having trouble with that, certainly go ahead and give us a physical wave. I will do my best to acknowledge you as I see them. And I saw Jim Kane waving first, so I will turn it over to you. Jim, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, this council meeting, to talk a little bit about Tap Room. The three minutes, if it's okay with you, David, I just might go a little longer because a lot was said at the last council meeting. I had no idea what was going to be presented at the council meeting, or else I would have attended. So I just might need a little bit longer, three minutes. I just pray and ask your indulgence. In 2016, just to give everybody on the call some context and perspective, we leased this tannery space that I'm in right now for a 10-year lease for a million dollars, and we put one and a half million dollars into the fit-out and equipment up here for our new production facility. Before we did that, we got a zoning rendering from Steve Ware, the zoning officer at the time, that we could put a taproom in here because it's conforming use, because it was accessory use, because we had a brewery. So based on that zoning consideration, we decided to make that two and a half million dollar investment up here in the production facility. Fast forward two years later, we fit out the taproom up here, and it cost $250,000. No Borough Council or zoning board hearing was required because it was already conforming use. I would say the first four or five months were a little rocky with our neighbors until we could kind of settle in. I gave many of the neighbors my telephone number. Many of them took advantage of that. If we were too loud or customers were misbehaving, you know, by talking outside, we'd go out and ask them to come back inside. But I think we settled into a good rhythm with our neighbors. Then COVID happened in March of 2016, I mean, 2020. So we shut down for three months because the governor wouldn't allow us to open. We were allowed to open in the June of 2020, but the only way we could do that is with a tent. And we were very appreciative of the council for allowing restaurants in the borough to erect a tent so we could, you know, service customers under a tent. For us, it was challenging up here because we were in a parking lot under a tent in the middle of the summer. So really, the only way we could attract patrons here was to have a little bit of live music, which is usually a vocalist and accompanying us on Friday and Saturday nights from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. The residents on South Main Street, by and large, were not impacted by that. The residents on Van Horn were significantly impacted by that because even though there are a football field and a half away, for whatever reason, the sound was just traveling. Many, three of the four neighbors there were very tolerant with us. I went and met with them. They understood what we were going through. And I promised them that as soon as the governor allowed us to sit 100% back inside, we would take down the tent. When the leaves fell off the trees, the sound traveled so closely, I actually drove onto Van Horn one night while the music was playing, and I could hear it clearly from outside of their house on the street. So we took the decision to close for four months and without any revenue, just to be good neighbors. Enter April of this year, spring sprung, the trees were budding. We opened up Tap Room again, and we resumed live music to attract customers. We got a decibel meter from Wes Code Official to measure the sound decimals of our music to make sure it was well within the limits. Wes and the police came out and they measured the sound, and it was well within the legal limits or the required limits. So we felt, even though we were, you know, the neighbors could still hear it, we felt that we were trying to be thoughtful. We still would lower it even when they asked. We had a celebration with the Grateful Dead cover band come out here as kind of a grand reopening to Tap Room. I did not get a event permit. I didn't even know an event permit was something that you should get. I understand that now, but I made a mistake and had a band here in the afternoon on a beautiful Saturday, and a tremendous amount of the community came out. They had, by and large, a great time, but some of the members, some of the residents, I should say, on South Main Street were negatively impacted by that. So that was totally on me.
Jim, if you could just take another minute. I know you're the owner there. I want to give you a chance to get to it.
David, I appreciate that. So all of that, I understand, was in the background when you surprised council with your vote to oppose us. Alls I'm asking for is the right not to have to bring food from Vault here every night, and sometimes two and three times in the middle of the night. And I just want to expand the kitchen here so we can offer authentic barbecue. I think the community would like that, and that hardship that we have with bringing food would be eliminated, and it would have zero impact on the negative impact on the neighbors on Van Horn, I don't think anyway, but it would have a tremendous positive impact on the entire borough community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next hand I see is Mr. Carlson. Go ahead, unmute yourself.
Hi, Don Carlson, 14 Creekview. My comments are a totally different topic. I just wanted to let the council know that the House Bill 1318 that's going through, which is going to try to make hybrid or Zoom calls legal in the state of Pennsylvania for our councils, even after the emergency order is up. If that goes through favorably, which hopefully it will, I just wanted to make a recommendation that some of the funds that we've recently received or about to receive, unplanned funds that we're about to receive, be spent to upgrade the council room by adding the appropriate computers, a big screen TV, and improve sound such that these meetings like tonight, where a lot of people can attend via Zoom, will still be able to happen even when the emergency orders are over and we're back physically there. I think you could, with a little bit of money spent, you could make you could have the best of both worlds. The people who can be in attendance at the meetings can be heard, and those who want to remain remote or need to remain remote can also be heard. And I think when the guidelines come out, I, my personal opinion is this would fall into COVID-related funds and should be a good use of our funds. So I just want to put that out there for council to consider and see if it can move up the priority list for when the funds get released. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Don. And, you know, I didn't catch you at the beginning, but just for the record, your address for the minutes.
Address is 14 Creekview Lane.
Thank you. And, you know, I think we're all agreement. I know that in Borough Hall, we've had a lot of discussions when we heard we were getting this relief money. That was one of the items that many of us zeroed in on to say, let's see if we can upgrade that system. And, you know, one of the benefits of the past 18 months has been that we see a huge uptick in participation in these meetings because folks can join virtually rather than having to come in person. So any hybrid opportunity, I think, could go a long way to helping people stay informed and participate. You know, it's tough to get to council chambers and sit there for two hours on a weeknight, people with kids, families, obligations. All right, next, for public comment, I see Vanessa Custain.
Yeah, no, thank you so much, David. I appreciate it. Just want to make sure, is this the right, I wanted to comment on something that Jim Kane had said just previously. Is this the right time to do that?
Yep, this is the moment. Just give your address for the record and your three minutes goes.
I appreciate it. Thank you, David. So my name is Vanessa Lisboa Custain. I'm at 2010 Makefield Road here in Yardley. And I just want to say, I appreciate the opportunity to come on and just be able to kind of address the community. And it's really nice to be able to have the opportunity to share your thoughts and concerns as well. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that, you know, I watched the meeting a couple weeks ago. And I'll tell you, when I watched it, I was a bit disappointed, and I'll tell you why. The reason I was disappointed is because, first of all, I completely support local businesses, and I think probably every single person on this call does. But I would say that regardless of the topic that is brought in front of the council, the council members have to be informed of every decision that or discussions that are going to be had. And what I saw and what I observed as a completely objective person was that it looked to me that there were some of the council members that were informed and some were not. And I'll tell you that I applaud the few that were questioning some of the decisions because I think that those council members have the right personality to be in this situation because they question things. Because you could take this topic of wanting to expand a restaurant or a business, or you want to bring in a library, you want to bring in a car wash, whatever the business is, if you take that topic out of the conversation that was last week, if you exchanged it with anything else, all council members need to be completely aware of the situation and have their, and be able to have informed, you know, decisions made prior or at least discussions. And I felt that when I saw that, that that wasn't the case, and that is concerning to me, because I feel integrity is really important. And I think that we have to make sure that everyone is informed so that decisions can be made and not in silos. And I felt in a way that that was what was happening. I completely support the expansion and ensuring that our council members are being representative in the best way. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, I see somebody messaged in the chat, Mr. Albert Salini. If you want to go ahead, unmute yourself, you can make your comment.
Yeah, thank you, David. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the council. I'd just like to just make a comment to Mr. Kane's. I am Albert Salini of 18 Van Horn Avenue in Yardley Borough. My property abuts directly to the Tap Room parking lot that Mr. Kane refers to. So first off, I want to say that we are very proud of Mr. Kane's investments in the community and what he's done for the community. And we generally had no qualm with the opening of the Tap Room as it was permitted use, 40 seats. He has industrial space there. We have no qualm with that. Matter of fact, we had, me and my neighbors, my wife and I, my neighbors, were understanding of the situation of the pandemic, which forced Jim to take those actions, which he did, and move outside to a tent. And we generally were accommodative during the tent episodes and the live music and comedy routines that were happening, although I'm not quite sure that was ever the permitted use for a 40-seat Tap Room. I'll lead that to council. But so we were very cautious in accommodative of it, and we want him to succeed. The goal here of expanding this beyond its permitted use as in light industrial space is not consistent with the original zoning. And I don't believe it's in the spirit of what our neighbors here on the Van Horn Avenue intend, want in our backyard because we don't know how 40 seats became 100 in the Grateful Dead band. Great party, Jim, I'm sure it was. But it's just not in nature of the quiet and peaceful use that we expect from our property and our zoning that was in place at the time. So when that time comes for that zoning to be considered, me and my neighbors will be in a pose, in opposition for the expansion. Although, like I said, you know, Mr. Kane, we appreciate and we, you know, frequent your establishment, we just, you know, the taproom there is fine, but, you know, a restaurant, you know, putting a smoker, it's the old adage, the camel's head goes underneath the tent. Pretty soon, the rest of the camel comes in. So the next thing we'll see is patio expansion, the expansion of the facility into a full-use restaurant that was never intended for that zoning. So that's the last of my comments. Thank you for letting me address the council.
All right, thank you. And I do apologize. I have lost track of the order in which the hands have gone up, so I'm just going to call them in the order that I see them on my screen, but I will make sure we get to everyone. So next up is Nicholas Puglisi. And I do apologize if I'm getting your names wrong.
That's all right. Thank you very much. My name is Nicholas Puglisi. I live at 8 South Street, right here in the borough. I'm a pretty close neighbor from the Tap Room. And I have to say, I haven't really had any issues with the noise that's coming from there. My main concern, though, is allowing the Tap Room to have a working kitchen or a smoker. I think it's an undue burden to put on a business owner to have him cart all his food across town constantly. He's allowed to serve food there. He should be allowed to prepare it there as well. And then that's about all I have to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Laurel Nowbone.
Hi, it's Lauralee Nowbone, 104 Iron Horse. Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, the Vault businesses have brought a lot to Yardley Borough and the community. They've, you know, created job opportunities. They filled empty retail spaces. They brought borough revenue in. And quite frankly, you know, they've made Yardley a fun and exciting destination where people go, they enjoy themselves, they have a good time, and seen a lot of smiles on people's faces at these businesses in the past year, which I think we all need. So I support Jim Kane's request to help the Tap Room with the extra, you know, restaurant supplies that they need. You know, he's shown his loyalty to the community and to the borough. And I just think the borough and the community should repay that a little bit to Jim. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Aiden Pally.
Hello, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I just wanted to reiterate some of the comments today. I'm also in support.
We need to get your address for the record.
Oh, sure. 21 Milton Drive, Yardley. I just want to reiterate, I'm also in support of, you know, Jim's comments today. I also want to say I'm very respectful of all the comments from all the neighbors. You know, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to ignore their point of view, but I wanted to express my point of view as a resident of Yardley. You know, I take a lot of enjoyment in frequenting Jim's businesses, all of his businesses. I have three young children. I have very, very few opportunities to get out. I don't want to stray too far from home. You know, my kids are very young, and we have babysitters, and we don't want to be too far away from them. And the fact that we have the opportunity to go out and frequent these amazing venues in Yardley is something that I think we really need to get behind and to support. And, you know, from what I understand, you know, Jim is committed to Yardley. You know, he's investing in Yardley. He's not investing in the surrounding neighborhoods or in other states. You know, he's putting all his effort and his expertise into operating businesses to, you know, create, you know, these wonderful venues for Yardley residents. And, you know, I also think that the appropriate venue for this type of discussion is the Zone Board Hearing, and that we need to give Jim a fair hearing. And it means that, you know, if anything, you know, we can't take an opposition to Jim's motion, I think we should get support. But at the very least, we need to give him a fair hearing, and let's do everyone's point of view. So, you know, I respect everyone's perspective. I'm in support of Jim. I think that it's really not going to make too much of a difference if he's preparing food onsite or bringing it in. You know, he's not expanding his seating. He's still having the same number of people inside the Tap Room, particularly when the tent goes down shortly. I think this can only be a good thing, but at the same time, I respect everyone's point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person I see is Pramad Kumar Shah.
Yes, you know, I have one point of view that when you run a food establishment and you have to haul.
Before you go, we could, your address for the record.
Yeah, it's 1058 Winder Drive in Yardley Borough. So, you know, if you're a food establishment and if you have to haul the food, you know, across the town, I have a problem with that because the food safety becomes kind of a big issue to make sure that, you know, food is safe while it is transporting. So I would 100% support Jim's venture to go and build the facility where he's preparing the food there versus bringing the food from outside. You know, I frequent Vault, you know, and Tap Room, and I can tell you that they are very sincere when it comes to the customer service and also, you know, making sure that, you know, community is also at their, you know, foremost respected, not just, you know, being a food establishment or a business owner and don't care about anything else. So I would say that, you know, we need to allow this to happen. You know, zoning needs to go through, and we hope to, you know, have more and more businesses like that successful in our township. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next hand I see is Kim P. Is it Ms. Prickett?
It is, yes. Thank you. I have a 20 West College Avenue is a property that I own, which is directly across the street from the entrance to the Tap Room. And I can say that I've received no complaints from the tenants that live at 20 West College from any of Jim's activities that have gone on. I can also tell you that when Music on Main happens at 20 West College, we can hear the music there. I'm not opposed to that. I think that that's great. It's nice. It's something to look forward to upon occasion. And again, I'm just in support of Jim continuing to grow businesses in Yardley and provide local areas for folks to go. I'd also like just to say that Jim can't control the number of people that show up. So although he has 40 seats and 60 people show up, he has no control for that. So when folks say that he's expanded beyond his ability, that is not necessarily something that he has intended to do. It just happens to be that that's the number of people that show up. So again, I am in support of what Jim is doing. I think it's great for the community and for our residents and for walk traffic. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got Glenn Lau.
Oh, hello there. Hello, everyone. My name's Glenn Lau. I'm at 148 North Main Street here in Yardley Borough. I grew up here in Yardley Borough my whole life, and I have two businesses currently in the borough as well. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys my opinion on the situation here a little bit. I'd like to start off by saying that I certainly respect and appreciate the checks and balances that we go through for issues like this because it impacts the residents and impacts all of us. So, you know, I think it's nothing but a good thing for us to be going through this. But, you know, in regards to this situation specifically, you know, first of all, the reason why Yardley Borough is becoming such a wonderful place, it's been a wonderful place, is because we have true walkability. You know, families, young and old, can come in and out of town, enjoy our establishments. And I think it's, you know, evident to these comments that are coming here, you know, that the establishment that Jim Kane has put in has, you know, made this, you know, made this happen big time. And it's affecting all the other businesses in a positive light as well. Essentially, that location, if you guys are not familiar with it, I invite you to check it out, you know, via maps or go there, walk there physically. When you compare it to any other location that we have in town, it's, in my opinion, ideal. And I do understand, you know, you're surrounded by, you know, a number of acres back there. You've got the golf course back there, plenty, plenty of parking, parking that any other business owner in town would die for. You know, I think it's, I think it's really, you know, set up appropriately for these events and, you know, to serve food and et cetera, et cetera. And look, what And, and look, what, what we're talking about here is the residents, especially like Albert, who are directly affected. And I think that Jim is a very open-minded person and very willing to come up with some type of, you know, compromise. That's, that's what we're talking about here. You know, what hours of operation, you know, when he has special events. We're not gonna, you know, he's not gonna have a rager, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You know, we're talking about, you know, maybe some, some events, which by the way, are going to be great for the public, great for, you know, putting our area on the map, right? This is going to bring our property, it's already brought our property values up.
Glenn, you too. About thirty seconds to wrap up.
Got you. So you see where I'm going. I just think where we're, what we're talking about here is a positive thing. We're talking about him being able to put food at establishment, which they already have food. So let's, you know, what's the impact, you know, now versus then? I don't think very much. And at the end of the day, it's, it's about some type of compromise. So let's, let's work with them. And we're, and we got COVID. We're talking about a business that wants to, that wants to continue to invest and grow during times like this. We should all be excited to do so. Let's come up with something that, that, you know, these residents that are impacted directly can, can, can work with as well.
Thank you. I saw someone in the chat a while back. I don't want to forget about Kathleen Grace.
Hey there. Can you hear me okay? Thank you so much for letting me speak up. I think I'm actually, it's Kathleen Grace and it's one twenty-nine South Main Street. I actually think I'm the closest housed to the tannery, even though I'm on South Main Street, so I am closest. And I, like many of the folks on the phone, are really supportive of all the businesses in town, of all the growth in town. I'm thrilled about the walkability. Do I ever hear music sometimes from back there? I do, but it's really respectful. I've heard music from Yardley Country Club when they have a, a big wedding. I've never minded that all these years. I never mind when I turn in the back. It's never been a problem to me. I think adding a smoker back there is not a big ask. There's already food there. As somebody who likes to walk into town, I'd rather have some more food options. So I'm really supportive of it. If I've had any issues back there and really with Jim and anybody who's back in the tannery, they've all been good, respectful neighbors. They keep that property beautiful. But they all know, I can reach out to all of them if I need to do something. So I appreciate that as well. So, I mean, adding a smoker is, is not an issue for me. So I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Wilczynski.
Hi there. I'm Andrea Wilczynski Urban Act. I'm at nineteen oh seven Yardley Roads. And I am in full support of the Vault Brewing Companies. I mean, when I moved from Philadelphia, it was quite the shocker, quite frankly, because the only thing that I saw in town was really was beauty salons, nail salons, Wawa, and then of course, realtors. So when the vault opened up, it was such a breath of fresh air to see that we actually had a place to go and not have to drive to Philadelphia or drive to New Jersey to get some decent food and to have some cocktails with friends. I'm a mom of two beautiful children. There's lots of mom groups out there. We frequent the vault. We go to the taproom and we enjoy it because we're all working moms. We're busy. We don't have time to drive to Philadelphia. And it's such a blessing to have it in our backyard, to know that we're having a good time, that we've got great drinks, we've got great friends and, you know, food that's right there. I think it saddens me a little bit that, you know, having a smoker would be such an ordeal at this point when we're trying to feed people and just make a better experience for everyone. So I'm really hoping that this isn't a total distraction for the Vault Brewing Companies and that they stay in Yardley, because I would hate to see them leave, making our sleepy little town really a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Dawn Promater. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dawn Promater, eighteen West College Avenue. I'm directly across from the opening of the tannery. There's a very important related issue here, and it's code enforcement. In a May eleventh newspaper article, Mr. Kane said, to date, he hasn't received any notification from the borough, a code officer or from council, that he's been doing anything wrong. Now, I assume he's being honest. I'm also concerned that Mr. Kane just said that the police and the code enforcement officer measured the decibels. The reason I'm concerned is he's not allowed to have music there. That was not part of the arrangement. It's not only in violation of Yardley Borough ordinances, it's in violation of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. This was supposed to be a forty-seat tasting room. And Kim Prickett really hit it on the head when she said he can't control the number of people who show up. And if code enforcement doesn't control it, it's just going to be, it'll turn into hundreds of people again. So I really see this more as a code enforcement issue. Because right now, we're working in good faith and it really isn't good faith because they're not bringing the food up from Main Street. The Cisco trucks are coming up, delivering the food. It's being cooked there already. And for people on the phone call who don't think that's a disturbance, it really is a disturbance when you have these giant trucks that can't even make the turn, ending up on your front sidewalk because they can't make the turn. So there's a lot of other issues here. There's traffic patterns. There's the idea that he's just adding a barbecue. It's a nightclub. It's a comedy club. When did that start? At some point, Yardley Borough is going to have to start enforcing its ordinances or things are just going to completely get out of control. So I would like to know, has he received any violation notices? Because I received one for Poison Ivy. The code enforcement officer, I was told by the borough manager, went there during that concert event. There were no toilets for hundreds of people. There was the loud thing, the loud noise.
It took about thirty seconds to wrap up.
Okay, so was he ever sent any violations? I mean, it seems like if we're going to rely on code enforcement, then we have a problem because for some reason, he's getting a pass on everything. Why would the police and the code enforcement officer measure decibels when he should have just said, you're not allowed to have the music here? So it's more than just an issue of food and, you know, a lot of residents here put a lot of money into their homes and we're entitled to peace and quiet.
Thank you. Before I continue, I do just want to briefly make mention of the fact that, you know, these are separate issues. Code enforcement and the variance are, you know, things that need to be considered separately. There's a separate process for those. I did speak with Paula a little bit about the complaints that we came in and what the, what the, you know, actions on the borough side are going to be. I don't know if we had one sent out yet, any sort of communication, but I know, you know, we were beginning that process that were in relation to some of those complaints we've received. Thank you. Let me look. I see Louisa Flanagan raising her hand. Go ahead. You need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, okay. Louisa Flanagan, one oh six South Main Street. I basically kind of have a question. I mean, I understand that he was granted this accessory use because of having the brewery there. Did that accessory use include a restaurant or any kind of, of, of serving food? Did that accessory use, you know, allow for other events like bands and comedians and whatever? I mean, making that, it, it seems like it was supposed to be called a tasting room. And I understand, I mean, I don't know, I haven't been to a lot of beer tasting rooms. I've certainly been up to a lot of wineries. And they will have sometimes some hors d'oeuvres or appetizers or something like that to go along with the food, but then you're not paying for it. I mean, it's, you know, they want to, they want to sell the wine. So I'm a little confused about what, what did this, this, you know, accessory use include? What was allowed? Because the thing that I'm, I'm concerned about is, you know, once you get, you know, once something gets, you know, the door gets opened and it gets pushed open a little bit, and I think somebody had a great analogy earlier, then you can't seem to stop it. And then all of a sudden, you find that it's way more than anybody in the neighborhood wants. And even, even the traffic and the traffic down at the corner of College and Main, it's going to probably end up having to have a stoplight, all of that sort of thing. And that's, that's not making the, the community better, I think, you know, with having too much traffic anyway. So I'm curious about the answer to that question, my question.
Thank you. Some of it I can answer now. Some of it I'm going to have to do some referring to documents. But as memory serves, at the time, the determination of the zoning officer, which I believe was Steve Ware at the time, was that as a tasting room, it fell under an accessory use of the brewery. And then a lot of these other restrictions that have been in place, I believe were done either through that zoning approval or through the use and occupancy permit. I know there was probably a lot of written back and forth, and there are going to be some of those documents that were issued that would have the exact outline of what was and wasn't allowed onsite. But as memory serves from the initial zoning interpretation, the, the idea was that the tasting room is an accessory use, but a kitchen was not, which was, at this point, would prompt the need for a variance to further that expansion.
But isn't a variance really for, you know, a hardship? You know, so, and I, so I would want to know what, what is the hardship there? He seems to, you know, he's got, you know, he does, has wonderful businesses in Yardley. We love the vault. We love, we love Pretty Bird. We're so happy that the sushi restaurant is going to happen in an appropriate place rather than sharing it with the coffee shop. But, you know, so I, I have no problems against the rest of his businesses. There are a lot of places on Main Street, which is a commercial area that are empty, you know? And so why go up to sort of a quieter area next to a school? I, I don't know, and turn it into
So I'm going to call time on us for three minutes. But some of this also, and I probably should have explained this earlier in our, in our rounded public comment, is, you know, when any business or homeowner for that fact, right, we have these both in, in a commercial sense and a private sense, sense, requested variance. You know, what they need to prove in that situation is a hardship. And that is not something that this council decides upon and grants, but that's something the zoning hearing board will decide upon and grant. That is a separate body from this organization. Council appoints the members, but that is all we have to do with them. And in this case, as in many others, the borough has acted as a participant frequently, in fact, in the past two years, you know, arguing against some of the requests that we've had. We've seen a lot of that in the floodplain. There have been some in the commercial district as well, when these variances come up. And, you know, the philosophy, my philosophy, it's not shared by all of council. It's why we had a split vote the other night, was that the ordinances are there to be upheld. You know, we certainly expect that, you know, if somebody's doing fifty down Main Street, that one of our fine officers is going to pull them over and not only pull over certain vehicles that, you know, maybe have variants. But, you know, that's what the zoning hearing board is there for, is to determine what is hardship, who qualifies for those exceptions. You know, and ultimately, that's not a decision that council is going to make. I see him from Scott Bernie.
Yes, hi. Nineteen and thirty-seven South Main. So first, I'm, I'm an interested party with the vault. So I'm, I'm an investor as well. So I want to throw that out there. But there's been a few chats going around about the Cisco trucks. There's storage up there. So all the dry goods and a lot of the refrigerated and frozen foods on the Cisco trucks go to that facility anyway and would not stop or increase based upon the zoning variance that, that's being requested. The, the other item I'd like to kind of jump in and communicate for Jim is that the, the addition of a smoker and a real kitchen is a, actually a very small footprint to the building. It's probably two hundred square feet. It, it doesn't really impact the, the facility at all. And as of the end of this month, all of the, all of the activity is going to be inside again because Jim's committed to that. So I think it's important to, all these other comments about being outside and music, those go away at the end of this month because Jim's committed to that. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that because there's a lot of, you know, people making assumptions about the forward-looking without knowing. And, and the reality is Jim's lived up to every commitment he's made to the community. And I invested because he's lived up to those, those commitments. And I'm a little bit offended for him by the, the accusations that he wouldn't live up to those, those commitments. So things coming inside, you know, there's not going to be a, a band with a hundred people. There's, there's going, there might be a comedy night, but you're going to hit, there's going to be thirty people available. So I, I don't, I, I want to make clear that people are arguing something that happened already as opposed to what's going to happen. So the, Steve Ware said the, the zoning was appropriate. Mike Catalio actually confirmed that last year or two years ago as well. So we've had two zoning officers. Kind of go through this. So that's about all that's already been fought. And the zoning officers have agreed that, two zoning officers have agreed that that's an appropriate use. So I, I just want to make sure that people understand that this is just a kitchen for an already existing establishment. And that's what, that's being asked for. And I'm, I'm good.
Thank you. Next I see Fred Rubina.
Hi, good evening, Fred Rubina from thirty-five South Main Street, La La Lobster. My question, and we're very pro-business. Obviously, we support business. We enjoy the ball well. My question to council is, would this variance affect future business? Like, would we be able to additionally open food and beverage establishments in this area now?
So this is going to be a question that I'm sure Bucky is here. I've lost you in the sea of windows. But, you know, is this something we've seen before where variances are granting? Does another business then sort of gain the ability to come in and say there's precedent based on the previous, you know, previous interpretations and variances?
Well, sure. I mean, while of course, every case is unique and, and it's subject to the facts and circumstances of each situation, you know, to the extent that, you know, something similar has been approved in a similar situation in the past, that would certainly be used by someone, you know, seeking a similar use as precedent to hopefully rely on to get what they're looking for.
Thank you. I see Dan Mahoney. Go ahead.
Hey, everyone. Dan Mahoney, thirty-five Homestead Drive in Yardley. I'm also an interested party. I'm an investor as, as, as is Scott Bernie. And, and for just listening to, to the conversations here, what it feels to me is that if there are concerns with noise, if there's concerns with the amount of people that are attending the taproom, it feels like that should be addressed appropriately. Because from what we're hearing and what Jim is saying, he's not hearing that. And when he is, he's addressing it in, in an upstanding way. So for me, it feels like this decision on So for me, it feels like this decision on this variance is not being made with an objective view. It's, there's concern around what this might lead to rather than, rather than the, the evaluating this for what it is. And it's really just an expansion of a kitchen to provide more better quality food, less running of, of cars up and down Main Street. So it feels to me that, that, that there's too much confusion. And I agree with you, David, that these are two different, these are two different subjects, but it feels like the decisions are already being cast based on subjectivity. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Paul Brzowski, did I see you waving your hand around earlier?
Hi, Paul Brzowski, one oh six South Main. You know, and just like everyone else, I'm in favor of business. I, I grew up behind a bar in Chicago, so I know the bar business. But I gotta tell you, you know, it's pushing the envelope. I remember when I first went to Paula and said, Paula, what's this about a bar going up? She said, no, 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 it's just a tasting room. And then you can see how it becomes a comedy club and a special events place. And Jim, you said, you know, ask you for things you want, you know, so keep the music down. Don't put in a kitchen, have your taproom that I think got in by hook or by, not by hook or by crook, but because I guess that's what was allowed. But once you put a variance up there, that's it. Just like Frederick says, it opens the door. Now you can put other restaurants in there. I'm already counting forty to fifty cars an hour coming down College Avenue, shining the headlights in our house. And okay, because you can have a tasting room, but now once you allow a variance, then I want to put a restaurant up there. Let me put one up there. And what about the smoker? Is that going to smoke us out? Are we going to be smelling smoke every day? I don't know how a smoker works. So that's a big concern for me. And, you know, I listen to everybody, a lot of the people who spoke tonight don't live around there. They don't really live around there. We live right down on Main Street. And, and, you know, some of these people who spoke are renters. Renters and homeowners have the same rights, but they don't have the same investment. We have 50 years of working here, my wife and I, between us, 100 years working to put money into a house that we are, want to protect our investment. We knew what the zoning was when we came in here. We don't want a variance for a kitchen because it'll open up the door to other kitchens up in that area. And I knew Jim was going to do this because if I were him, I would have done it too. It was great business, Jim. I know that, I know that. I'm not belittling you for trying to do it. But I'm just going to say that on record, that, that, and, and I see what we're up against as homeowners. There's a couple of homeowners around there and the rest of them are patrons. And the patrons are supporting you, Jim, as well as they should, they're your patrons. So I understand it, but I think as homeowners, we have some rights.
But we're patrons too.
But we're patrons also.
Next up I see Susan Taylor.
Quite frankly, I have a procedural question. Most of the comments that have been said tonight, I believe should be directed to the zoning hearing board. The entity that will be hearing this case, they are an independent body. So is Borough Council planning to reconsider its vote? Tonight? Because other, if that isn't on the table, I don't really know that all this testimony is appropriate at this point in time because it's going to the wrong place. Unless, unless you all want to convince Borough Council to vote again.
Thank you. You know, procedurally, that is correct. This is not the deciding body in this case. And regards to reconsideration, you know, a motion would be in order, probably at the close of public comment would be the appropriate time if a council member wishes to make that motion. It's not on the agenda tonight, but that does not prevent a member of council from bringing up that, that item of business. All right, I see a hand from Tim Wheeler.
Hi, everyone. Tim Wheeler, eight fifty-four Kilby Drive in Yardley. I am also an interested party. I am the Director of Culinary and Operations at Vault Brewing. There was a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Scott, Scott Bernie actually hit on the Cisco deliveries and the truck traffic as well as the food that's being stored up there and mostly dry goods that get dropped off there and then dispersed down through the rest of the borough so that a Cisco truck will not be blocking the entire place down at ten South Main. As far as the smokers go, if anybody's walked through the borough in the last year, there've been three establishments that run ovens with smoke, with, run by wood. One was a Red House that is now closed. And I was the owner of that as well as my partner Abby Rust. The Vault is using one now and so is Vincent's. If anybody's smelt wood burning from any distance away, let me know. I've, I've definitely had my smoker on at eight o'clock in the morning, running through two o'clock in the morning when I was at Red House. Never had, never had a complaint about, you know, smelling like fire. I've had the chief by, I've had constant, you know, drive-bys by the borough police officers, you know, waving their hands, hey, how you doing, that kind of thing. But as far as any sort of, you know, smoke stack, this is a, or will it, we are anticipating it to be a three to four day use running 12 hours a day. Most of the times when you're not even awake. And the smoke carries up, you know, it's a small flue, it's probably, you know, eight inches, six inches. But this isn't, it's not, it doesn't look like a, you know, it doesn't look like a freight train or, you know, an old coal-run, you know, railroad car. It's very, very, they're, they're very, very good at this point. You know, couldn't be any worse than seeing eight or 10 backyard fires going on at the same time. You know, little bonfires or whatever people have in their backyards. But we will, as we go through it, make sure that it is to the best of our ability and obviously can't control them of the nature. So a couple of hours a day, maybe a couple of hours, every couple of days. You may smell, you know, you may smell some brisket being smoked. You know, but if that's, if that's painful, then, you know, we will, we'll do our best to try to derail the, uh, the smoke running in different directions. But if anybody's got any questions about it, they can always get in touch with me or anyone at the Vault. We're happy to have a conversation about that. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. You know, unfortunately, I do see another hand there from Mr. Piggly C. We do keep these to one comment per, you know, if I open these up to everybody go round two, then we will be here for quite a long time. So I know you did have your comment earlier in this meeting. Do we see any other public comment this evening? I don't see anyone on the raise hand feature, but please now turn on your video and wave ice. Okay, Bruce Leis. You'll need to unmute.
My name's Bruce Leis, I live at forty-two West College Avenue. And I totally support the variance of, for the taproom. Living here for the last three years, I had no negative impact with any music from the taproom. I've had more impact from music on Main than at the taproom. And I just wanted to say I totally support the smoker and being able to prepare food at the taproom.
All right. Thank you. And, you know, I didn't catch it. Did we get your address for the record?
It's forty-two West College Avenue.
Thank you. I apologize if I'm missing those. Next I see Tim Johnson.
Hi, thank you. I think it's important to keep the, the issue of the smoker separate from, from the noise issues and so forth because they really do seem like separate issues. But that said, someone had mentioned code enforcement, I guess I'm concerned if, if there is code violations going on, they are enforced. Because that is going to build a lot of goodwill if, you know, if, if the public does see, you know, codes being enforced. That's my comment. I'm at eleven Breeze Drive. I don't know if I mentioned that.
Thank you. Taking a peek around, do we have more public comment tonight? At the moment, it is a bit hard with this many in the sea. I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. I don't see anyone with the raised hand feature. Don't see anyone waving in their videos. So I'm going to, okay, Scott, go ahead.
All right, Scott, two six seven Madison Drive in Yardley. I just saw a question pop up and I wasn't aware that is Yardley Borough paying for a lawyer to look at this zoning decision? And I'm just wondering why are we having, you know, a lawyer looking at this? This is a zoning board decision? What's the story?
Thank you. So the representation would come from the borough solicitor, which is Curtin and Hefner. They are a counsel on all things Yardley Borough. They are here at all of our council meetings and involved in any number of matters that come before the Borough Council. And again, this is not a new practice. This is something we've done before and it's certainly very common in any municipality in Pennsylvania where we operate under this system when it comes to variances. So I know that's a, that's a line that's made the rounds is hiring a lawyer. But it's, you know, we did not go and find a new firm to do representation here.
And, and what's, what's the next step with, with the zoning and the variance?
Right, so we touched a little on this earlier. There will be a hearing at, for the zoning hearing board that will take place in person at Borough Hall, I believe. It was scheduled for this coming Monday and it was further postponed at the request of the business to July. So Paul, I don't know if you have the date, but I believe we're the fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday in June.
Thank you. So at that time, there will be, it's essentially a quasi judicial hearing. There is testimony and the zoning hearing board is the body that will make the final determination on the zoning.
And the meeting announcements posted on the Yardley Borough website?
Believe it will be. We may need to update it because again, it was scheduled for, for this week and it got postponed. But we will check in with the advertising requirements because I know this one has been moved a couple of times. But we'll make sure that information is publicly available as well as being advertised in the appropriate newspapers as is legally required.
Great, thank you.
All right, I see a hand from Lois Trigone.
Hi, thanks so much. It was, it's been very interesting listening to all the comments tonight.
Lois, before you go, if I could just get your address for the record.
Yes, one two five South Main Street in the borough.
Thank you.
We've been thirty-eight plus year residents of both the township and the borough. And we have seen such a wonderful quality of life in this community. The businesses that are here are thriving because the residents are supportive of them. It's neighborly, there's a feeling of kindness. It's just a beautiful thing to walk down the street with your dog in the morning and address people as you see them. It's just lovely. But we support Jim Kane 100%. This is a gentleman of integrity. He has brought life to this community, he has brought passion to this community, he has brought jobs to this community. People are coming here as a destination. Let's not be afraid, let us not vilify someone who's trying to do good for us. This is a beautiful thing. Music is not the worst thing you can hear, trust me. We've come off the worst year of most of our lives. And this is what we have to look forward to. Someone who wants to inspire us to continue to live happily together peacefully. And when we have issues, bring them up, discuss them respectfully and kindly and work them out. And I think Jim Kane has shown nothing but that attitude. So God bless all of you. We are thrilled to be part of this meeting. But Jim, go for it, bud.
Thank you. All right, looking for more public comments. All right, we are going once, going twice, going three times, hearing none. I will close the public comment portion of the meeting. So just to put a pin in that, the zoning hearing board will take place that fourth Monday in June. That's when the final determination regarding the variance will be made by the members of the zoning hearing board. There was just one other item which I wanted to address because I think it really questioned the integrity and the motives of this council. You know, and that was that the vote took place at all last time. And this item appeared on our agenda. Supporting documentation regarding this case had been included in the packet of information that is sent to Borough Council members, not just at the last meeting, but at meetings even prior to that. Our manager, Paula Johnson, does a very good job of including information in her report from things that are minor to things that rise to the level of something like a zoning hearing board meeting. So I just want to say for the record that we take the appropriate steps. The item appeared on the agenda, the information was available to everyone in preparation for a vote when we took it last week. All right. See, Mr. Finer has a hand up. I think it would probably be appropriate, we don't usually do this. But I will allow each of the council members three minutes' time to make a statement before we continue with the agenda. So I see you first, Mr. Finer, go ahead.
Thank you, President Bria. So it does, it seems to me that clearly this is a nuanced issue. We've heard a lot from both sides, not both, there's more than two sides. I think there are a lot of, lot of perspectives here. And this is why there is a zoning board. Because they need to spend a few hours on this issue and make a decision and take it all into consideration. And I think it's confusing sometimes because it seems like we're talking about the variance here, but really not. What I see is I see a business owner who's been a responsible business owner that after a year of COVID, which was, you know, the biggest life-threatening thing that could happen in the hospitality, hospitality industry, his businesses have, have survived, which is a big deal. And he threw an event which he's taken responsibility for without an event permit. And I think if we're going to have codes, we're going to have laws, we do need to enforce them or we shouldn't have them. And it seems that somehow in that process, we've left the process of communication with neighbors. You know, before this meeting, I got an email that we all got from Jim and had a question about it. So I gave him a call. He's never seen my number before because I've never called Jim before. He picked up the phone and we had a, you know, five-minute conversation. He's accessible and it's, it's sad to me that this happened. President Bria, I know you, you say that, you know, your intention, I give you the benefit of the doubt, your intention is good. But the way it comes across when we have a vote and we don't even invite the business owner who's invested in our community to present his viewpoint, is that something's being shoved through. I don't think we should be spending solicitor money on taking a position.
He voted for Jim.
Excuse me?
No, Yuri Finer.
It, can you guys, I'm not, I'm not sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yuri, you're fine, someone else is speaking, they're muted now.
Okay, so, okay. So I don't think, I just personally don't think we should be spending money on it. I think it's a nuanced issue. We should, and I also want to say that I remember 10 years ago when the Vault first came in and, and I met the sons, Jim Kane's sons, and I was concerned, how is this business going to survive? Because the word on the street in Yardley was that small businesses don't make it here, there's not enough foot traffic. Because the word on the street in Yardley was that small businesses don't make it here. There's not enough foot traffic. And they said, we're going to bring people in from the surrounding area. And they did. And not only did they survive, Continental actually improved their business. And they really, I think, in large part, it's been other business owners too, but in large part, they have, uh, done a beautiful job of investing in the Borough and overall, when you look at the whole picture, improved the quality of life here. So I think if they want to add a smoker, it's a zoning decision to see if that impacts the volume. For all we know, less people might go because they can stay there longer instead of having more turnover. I don't know. I think that's too complex for me as a councilman to make that decision. I just ask us to stay out of nuanced issues and, um, just deal with our code enforcement. The laws are the laws. Enforce them. Let zoning make zoning decisions unless it is something that's very clear cut, and this is not clear cut to me. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Curtin. You're up next.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, look, I do not intend to drag this out. I know that everyone, there's been a lot of thought, um, and comment, and I appreciate everyone for coming to council and sharing their perspectives, residents, other customers, et cetera. Uh, and again, I don't want to tread over old ground that we covered at the last meeting. I agree with a lot of what Councilman Finer said at the last meeting and again tonight. My only, you know, recommendation would be, you know, I think where we are right now, this is going to go to zoning. In the spirit of a compromise amongst council. You know, I would like to propose, and I'll make a motion when everyone's done commenting, if that's the appropriate time to do it. But if we want to send a solicitor because we feel that that preserves our rights and that that's prudent to do so, then we can do that and I would, I would actually support that. Um, but I don't think we should take a stance as a council on this before we have the benefit of the hearing. Right? And so my view would be to send the solicitor as a neutral party, thereby preserving our rights. And then let's have the hearing, right? And let's all go and let's have the residents speak and let's hear what the zoning board decides. And then we can regroup and it doesn't preclude us from taking action. Um, but I think it would be more appropriate to actually have the benefit of the hearing. I've heard a lot. I've heard a lot from residents in the past two weeks, heard a lot from people tonight. I've also spoken to Jim on a few occasions and I agree with Yuri's comments. But I believe the appropriate time to have a view is once we've had the hearing. So my suggestion would be that we send a solicitor, um, but in a neutral capacity to preserve our rights and be prepared to make that motion after everyone else's comments, but those are my, that's my opinion.
All right. Well, let's do it that way then. So we'll let the rest of council comment. I'll open the floor for a motion at that time. So Mr. McCann, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll just interject that, you know, to echo both of them, I, I think stated articulately. Um, you know, I actually walked after our hearing, I walked down, my wife, we went down to the tap room. And, you know, walking up from, uh, you know, College Ave there, there's a restaurant on the corner, there's a bank. There's a whole industrial complex on the other side of M7 that I'm not even sure, that probably brings trucks. So, and even in M7, there's other businesses and activity in there that brings traffic. So I don't think it's fair to put the traffic issues on Jim's business, uh, alone. Um, but, but I would say that, you know, one of the reasons Yardley is a vibrant town is the businesses that he brings here. It does make it a destination. It's one of the reasons I, I moved into town, um, as well. And I, I think he does a really good job. He stand up. He took ownership of, uh, the event that seemed to get a little out of control. Um, and, you know, especially giving access to all these people, his cell phone. Um, I think he's being a really good neighbor. And, and I, I think that shows through to at least me and I'm sensitive to quality of life issues. And I don't think it's appropriate to be playing music at night, uh, all night. Or in, it seems like there's a separate issue of what happened in COVID in the tent that I think is getting intermixed in this issue as well. Um, and I'm glad to see his businesses made it through this really difficult time. And as, um, you know, the head of the Community Economic, um, Committee, I, I think it's important that we do, uh, and have outreach to our businesses. And that if something affects them, we really think about it and analyze it as a council and certainly keep that open dialogue. So I just, you know, welcome this body and everyone here to have more outreach when we vote on things that affect business owners because they are a lifeline of our community too. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson. Are you muted?
Of course. Um, so thanks, David. Um, the first thing that came to mind when we started discussing this, um, when it showed up, you know, in Paula's manager's report many months ago, was the TOD, which was transient, transit oriented developments. And, um, you know, John just talked about this council not maybe talking about this issue. But for those of you who actually live in, in Yardley Borough and not LMT, uh, the TOD discussion was one that ripped this town in two parts. And it happened just before this council took office. And a transit oriented development is one that mixes commercial, residential and industrial. And we had four, five hour meetings. We had hundreds and hundreds of residents come out speaking against this. And that is the first thing that came to mind when I saw this come across my desk in the council packet. Do we want, um, transit oriented development where we're mixing residential zones? And I had my data points from that discussion four years ago, five years ago from Yardley Borough residents, that that was not something that we wanted. I do regret that the conversation at the last council meeting really did blur many different tops, topics. We are narrowly or should be narrowly focusing on kitchens and seat counts. And I think you will find the zoning hearing board will not stray outside of that topic at all, except perhaps the public comment may. Uh, and I also want to highlight what opposition versus neutrality would look like in terms of the solicitor representing us. It's not a crazy court scene like you would see in the movies. Um, it's just questions about how, what is being requested in the variance would apply to our ordinance as they are written to try to determine if, um, this is appropriate or not. Um, and again, going to that point of any precedent that might be set. Um, and I'd also just, I, I do, I do have concerns about incrementalism here though. Um, you know, I went back and looked at my notes from 2019, which were the dark days of council. They weren't fun notes to read, but we had a tap room listening session back then. John Kane came. He said it will be light fare and tasting food. And then, um, Jim Kane came to the meeting after that and said, this is not going to be a place. Wait, the quote was, this is not a place to get drunk. I guess you could if you wanted to, but it won't be encouraged. And, um, I think when we're talking about a four course meal or a three course meal, the length of time people are staying to protect, perhaps for take of drinks and get drunk, that extends, we're extending the places where we might see DUIs and where our police patrol. So, I mean, this is very complex and that's why the conversation gets so muddled every time and it has tonight. So I just, I think we really need to think about the whole of this picture, about the precedent we're setting, about TODs and, um, whether that's something we want here. And, um, you know, about where this leads if we continue to allow incrementalism to happen with, um, variances that we give to our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Do we have other council members, uh, or Mayor Harding, if you so wish, does anyone else wish to make a comment on this? Mr. Ross.
Uh, yeah, I'll just kind of mimic, uh, what Ms. Thompson said. I got involved in council because of the whole TOD thing. And I remember it vividly like it was yesterday. I mean, all the meetings where council chambers were packed and everybody in the town was, it seemed like everybody in the town was against it. There was no TOD signs in everybody's front lawn. Um, it was just a big issue. And to me, reading it, this is not really about business because I'm, I'm all for the vault. I love the vault. I love everything they're doing. But this is just repackaging the word TOD in the word kitchen. So I'm just worried of the unintended consequences that everybody was worried about with TOD happening here. So again, all for business, but we really have to look at the big picture and it's, it's more about just a kitchen.
I would have to say I'm, I see, um, both sides of this issue. Um, I agree that the, uh, code enforcement is a separate issue. And then, um, the noise or the group, that's a whole different issue entirely. I, um, I agree with Matt Curtin that I do think that the Borough needs representation at the zoning hearing board meeting. Um, we need to look after the interests of the residents in that area and the residents of the Borough. Um, I believe that Jim deserves a fair hearing at the zoning board hearing. Um, but I also agree with Caroline and Matt Ross that, um, we need to be careful on the variances granted so that we don't turn that area into, you know, a growing restaurant area. But again, I think that the zoning board hearing is the place to determine that.
I see Mayor Harding.
Hey, thank you, Council President Bria. Um, so for those of you who don't know, I live at 121 South Main Street. So my property backs to, uh, ML7 in the vault. And, you know, without rehashing everything, yes, I've heard music from the vault, from Yardley Country Club, from Music on Main, all of those things. I've never known Jim to be anything but a good neighbor. If I had a concern, he was always available for me to speak with him and I always appreciated that. Um, without mixing the issues of code enforcement and everything we spoke about, special offense, we spoke about tonight. I think, uh, Matt Curtin, again, I don't have a council vote, obviously, but I think Matt Curtin had a sensible plan to send the solicitor for representation. Let zoning hearing board do what it does and then have council, if they want to make a decision, make it based on the facts after the hearing. So just my opinion in that process.
Great. Thank you. All right. I think we've heard from all of council now on that. So I am going to open up the floor for a motion.
Councilman, uh, Bria, is it possible to just respond to one thing that came up in that conversation?
Sure.
Thank you for the time. I'll be brief. Just regarding the TOD, um, you know, many of you know, I was the lead person in opposition against that. Uh, it started out as the only person. And then by the time I was done with my petition, it was all, the whole council. Um, and the reason was because the process was wrong. The process, in my opinion, should have been a long process with lots of community input. And instead it was just this push through. And it was going to be a major change without enough, uh, community discussion. Also, in that time, there wasn't a single person for it. This is totally different than that. This has nothing to do with that. And this one, actually, I think the forum for it is the zoning board. And in a way, for us to take a position here, without that happening first, it's more like what led me to be in opposition to the TOD than the TOD itself. I don't think it opens the door to anything because he's not asking for more capacity. So I just want to make a distinction there and not to confuse that issue with this. We are not talking about changing the zoning for the Borough. To me, it's a single situation, um, that the zoning board is best equipped to handle as opposed to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finer. All right, I will open it.
Yeah, David, okay. Yeah, I'd like to, to make a motion. This is very targeted, not related to zoning or code enforcement, just preserving council's rights. Uh, I'd like to motion that we send a solicitor on a neutral basis to the zoning hearing board. Um, and then reevaluate our position after the results of that hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second procedural note. Mr. Klosser, I'm going to turn to you. Is that sufficient or do we need to rescind the motion from last meeting?
Uh, I think in effect, the motion will rescind the motion from last meeting. So I think we're okay.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Curtin, a second from Mr. Finer. At this point, I usually would open the, uh, motion for discussion by both public and the council, but we have in effect done that already. I will, as a courtesy, just ask council one more time if they have any brief remarks to make before we move to a vote.
I, I'll just ask in, in terms of Matt, just to refine what you were saying, you're, we're basically paying the solicitor to go and not act at all.
He, well, I, I guess, uh, the way I would say it, John, is he's not going in an advocacy, advocacy, um, role. He's going there to preserve our rights. So if he has a question about how the zoning would affect us as a Borough in terms of future zoning hearing board issues, he could definitely ask that type of question. He's really there to preserve our rights as council to react either way, regardless, if we want to, regardless of the outcome. And maybe Bucky can clarify the way I butchered that, but it's, it's not for him to be silent, but it's for him to not take an advocacy position. Yeah, that's how I understand the motion, uh, as, as I understand it, we would be present. We could certainly ask questions relevant to the matter. If, especially if we think something, uh, should be on the record that hasn't already been put on the record by the parties. But we wouldn't be advocating, uh, the board to make, you know, one decision or another.
So just to add here, if it's helpful, in the zoning hearing board meetings, uh, related to the flood plain, when we've sent, uh, the solicitor to oppose, they state that at some point. And whereas neutrally, they really don't state any position one way or another. But the questions that are asked really turn out to be pretty much the same. It's just how, how they're presenting themselves as clearly an opposition at the beginning of the hearing.
Yeah, I think that's probably the accurate summary that, you know, functionally, there's not a whole lot of difference between these two. I mean, there is some certainly. Uh, Mr. McCann, I know you were jumping in there. Go ahead.
Yeah, that makes more sense. Um, I'm in favor of a good compromise. I would still prefer not to send the solicitor, um, for that purpose, but, um, I, I would be in favor of that compromise, just to state. But thank you for the explanation.
Any more questions from council? I see none. I am going to ask for the public with the caveat, which if you have not commented on this matter as part of your public comment, uh, it would be appropriate you for, to enter a comment into the record now. Don't see anyone. So I will bring this back. Oh, I do see one. I'm kidding. Gail Posey, you did not comment during public comment. Uh, so it would be in order now. And you are muted.
Gail Posey, 120 South Main Street. I just have one question. Who has final say if the zoning board says that there is a variance or there isn't? Does the Borough Council still have a say after that or? How does that work?
So in cases where a variance is granted, uh, if the Borough were to disagree with that variance, you know, we do have the ability to appeal that decision through the Court of Common Pleas. Uh, I don't know if this is something we've done before. It's something that can put us in a tricky territory if the reasoning for that variance was granted, um, is questionable. And Bucky could probably do a much better explaining that or providing context.
Yeah, the zoning hearing board is basically a quasi judicial body. So once it renders in a, a decision, anyone who has party status in the matter, including the Borough, because the Borough, uh, by definition is a party to a zoning hearing board matter in the Borough, could appeal that decision, uh, to, to a higher court. Uh, so it's really through the court process that the ultimate decision would be made. Obviously, if there's no appeal from the zoning hearing board decision, then the, the decision itself would be final.
Can you also just clarify, who would qualify for party status aside from the Borough?
Well, it's, it's typically the, the, the people that are directly affected by the proposal, um, the proposed variance.
Understood. Okay, uh, any further comment or questions again from folks who did not comment on this in the public comment portion? Because we are leading these two together. All right, I see none. So we're going to move to a vote. Mary Ann, I know you're somewhere on here. If you could do a roll call for this.
Sure. Um, Mr. Finer?
Aye.
Mr. Curtin?
Aye.
Mr. McCann?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Segal Morris?
Aye.
And Mr. Bria?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Um, right, before we proceed with our agenda, council members, we have a full sheet of business to get through. Does anyone need a two to three minute breather before we continue?
I'm good. Let's keep going.
Everybody sticks around, David.
I am excited to see, uh, how many hang on for this. So.
We're going to approve the bills list now.
Yes, we are closing public comment. We are on to consideration of today's consent agenda dated May 4th. Consists of five items. Consists of five items, first being approval of the bills list for today, May 4th. Uh, approval of the, I'm sorry, approval of the bills list for today, May 18th. Approval of the minutes from our meeting on May 4th. Approval of an event permit for Music on Main. And there are two certificates of appropriateness, 21 dash 12 for a sign at 40 South Main Street and 21 dash 13 for a sign at 20 Mount, uh, South Main Street. Would any member of council like for one of these items to be considered separately from the consent agenda? And since we have consent, we'll consider them, uh, as a whole, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, motion by Mr. Finer, second by Mr. Ross. Are there any comments, questions, discussions from council? Any from the public? Ms. Perlmutter?
Thank you. Um, it goes to the bills list. Um, I'm still a little confused. There are three payments to Armor and Sons Electric totaling $21,421.61. They were done after a property owner hit the conduit and knocked out the streetlights on Main Street. The borough manager wasn't clear about which payments went where, but some come out of the streetlight fund. I still don't understand why the borough is paying for something that a property owner did. There should be insurance. If it was one Pennsylvania One Call's fault, they have insurance. I don't think the um, residents should have to pay for something that was done by a property owner.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson, you any clarification on this invoice? What the, the item was for?
This was not the property owner's fault. They did call PA One Call. It was our streetlights that they hit that were not marked out by PICO or marked out by us because we had no idea that they were there. This is the previous bills list. I believe they were voting on tonight's bills list. So it's not the property that was wrong.
And arising, you know, the issue of insurance, I think that's probably something we could look at, you know? Generally, in a case like that, I think it'd be one where we'd pay for the work and look to get reimbursed on the backend. But certainly, we had our contractor come out here and do a job, and it would be appropriate to pay them for that job. Alright, any further comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven to zero. We'll move on to item number eight, which is a report from Chief Kelly.
And I'm related to tell you, sir, no reports here.
Thank you. You're trying to get on everybody's good side. Uh, we'll move next to Ms. Johnson for the borough manager's report.
I'm not gonna be on her good side, because I have a few things. Um, as we know, we are welcoming Memorial Day Parade back. We're all happy to be able to have, host this event again. So sometimes next week, we are going to be doing street cleaning. I'll send an email blast out, letting everybody know what day it is to try to get everybody's cars off of the road. It's going to be Main Street and up, and then the other half of the borough gets done for Harvest Day. Um, because of Memorial Day, we have a little change in our trash collection. They always bump it back a day, so for Memorial Week, our trash collection will be on Thursday, and then it'll be normal on Saturday as well. Um, I think that is it. And also, I just want to remind everybody, the Memorial Day Mile is obviously on Memorial Day. Expect some street closures. Everybody on Main Street will be getting a flyer from the rec board advising you of the times when the streets are going to be closed. And remember, they're going to be closed for the parade. And please come, support the veterans, come to the monument and see the ceremony. It's a great job by our veterans, so I really encourage everybody to come out, and that is it.
Thank you. Leave times for those events on Memorial Day itself, 9:00 AM is the ceremony.
Yes.
At the River Road in Afton, that's put together by the VFW and American Legion, and then the parade, I believe, is at 11:00 AM. Begins up at Maple Vale in Armoryville Township and makes its way south on Main Street to end at the American Legion. We would love to see everybody back, especially in light of uh, lifting guidelines. This is something that's gonna feel normal again. Uh, I think we all welcome that.
And the Memorial Day Mile is at 8 o'clock, and all of council is running, including the chief. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I was voluntold that I would be participating in the Memorial Mile, so everybody wish me luck. Uh, alright, moving on, Mr. Kloster for a solicitor's report.
Uh, thank you, but I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. We will go to council members' reports, begin with Mr. Curtin.
No report, David.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mr. Ross, and I believe you do have some business for us.
I do. Alright, so with the sidewalk, um, Public Works met tonight for a very extended session um, to discuss the sidewalk. Uh, because of PICO um, having to move some poles, we discovered that if we were to move the poles, that we would have to remove quite a few trees. I think the number was either 16 or 17, um, which we're definitely not willing to do, um, because one, it'll destroy the beauty that is Yardley, and then two, it's quite costly. Um, so the engineer worked up three different options for changes that'll allow that not happening. Um, we all kind of agreed in Public Works that option two would be the best route, which would kind of tuck the sidewalk directly behind the poles and pretty much shoot in a straight line. Um, all the way down through the entire project. Uh, we're still in the easement. Um, we are gonna send the proposed option two to all the residents that it affects, so we can get some feedback from them, uh, and see how it goes. We'll give them a couple weeks to respond, and then Public Works is gonna be prepared to make a motion at the next council meeting to move forward with option two, if uh, if everything goes as planned.
Great. Um, so in summary, I was on that meeting as well. Um, the options that we were presented with, again, they were to avoid this tree removal, um, which would have raised the cost of this project somewhere, I think in the $200,000 range. It was, it was a big number.
Give or take.
And the options were essentially to notch around the poles, which would create sort of a, a, you know, Tetris looking sidewalk. Uh, or to just jog the sidewalk three to four feet away from the road. So it's where phase one, the sidewalk is, you know, you have the road, you have the curb, and the sidewalk is right there. This would be moving in a little bit. Uh, as Matt mentioned, it is still within the borough's right of way. So it doesn't require us to obtain the easements, and, you know, I know there were some concerns years ago when the initial plan had this sidewalk way up in people's front yards. That is not what we were planning to do. Uh, it's just a couple feet to the side, so that we can keep those trees in place and save a good deal of money. Um, so we are gonna open the comment period from those residents, so that they have an opportunity to input. Um, but then it is quite important that council gets to a vote on this at the first meeting of June, so that we can stay on our construction schedule for this year for that sidewalk. And uh, I'll give Mr. Finer the floor. I know you were in that meeting as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, to um, appreciate the Public Works Committee for the work you did on this. It was, it was very complicated. As, as a person who lives where that sidewalk is going to be, and uh, uh, I have great neighbors and I care about all of them, so I went to every property to look at it. And I was kind of against this option initially, but after looking at the, you know, no option is perfect. But I do think this one is the one that's gonna result in the nicest looking sidewalk with the least amount of impact, and also it can be, for the most part, a foot narrower because it's not right up against the road. I think it's a great advantage for a low-traveled sidewalk. And I'm just excited to have a sidewalk after 10 years of owning this house and waiting for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curtin?
Uh, yeah, I, again, want to thank um, Public Works. Also, I know you're, you've done some work on this. As the current person who lives where the sidewalk ends, and Matt, you know, you and I spoke about this before I was on council. I am excited about the work you guys are doing and for everybody up here to have it. The only thing I had a question on, and, and we could take this offline. I am surprised, uh, and this is not meant to derail what Public Works is proposing, but I am surprised that PICO was required to move the poles, and yet we're required to pay for the tree removal. So I'm just wondering, did that come from PICO, or where? I, I just hadn't. Uh, I mean, Bucky, but I was surprised by that.
Well, the main issue is where the poles have to get moved. When we did the sidewalk the first time, the, the rules, that's not actually PICO's rules, Penn Dot's rules, um, were different than what they are now. So when we did the first phase of the sidewalk, we had to move the poles less than they'd have to be moved now. There's a minimum requo, like, uh, range that Liz could comment on where the poles had to be moved before, where now that was pushed back three, four feet. So with the poles going as far back as they would, we would have had to remove a lot of trees that would be in, you know, the current power lines that would be affected from it. Um, so there, there was definitely a PICO rule change from phase one to phase two that really turned this into a problem. And uh, to be able to find a solution that one is saving money, two is saving trees, um, and three is, is actually safer because the sidewalk is a little bit off the roadway. Um, I mean, I think it's a win-win all around.
Thank you.
Um, and just for clarification for your, your question, Matt, um, the removal of the trees being on the borough is because the, the moving of the poles is at our request. Not something that PICO had to do because of something that they were doing. If they needed to move their own infrastructure for their own project, they would be responsible for all the ancillary costs associated with it. So because it's something that we're requesting to be done, we're on the hook for those extra costs.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Liz.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, are there any other, before we move on, just questions or need for clarification regarding the sidewalk? Just wanna make sure we're in good shape, because we are at a critical juncture with this project. Alright, see none. Um, so expect a vote on that first meeting in June. Mr. Ross, is anything else for your report?
No, that is all. Well, I'll add one more thing. There is a few grant opportunities that we, we're discussing also that will be coming up to council in the next one to three meetings, depending on which one it is. And one of them is for phase three of the sidewalk, so get ready for that.
Yeah, I, I think um, if we could maybe compile sort of a high-level review of some of those grant opportunities to get included either in the next packet or just, you know, informationally distributed, so that when it comes time to discuss those, perhaps next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I cannot, just, just a summary of the, the three grants discussed, we can, we can include in the next council packet, and then they'll probably be coming up right after that.
Mm-hmm. I, I know they have some tight turnaround time going, so I want to make sure that we're all up to speed.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Uh, moving over next is Ms. Ego Morris.
Uh, nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. I will skip myself, because I also have no additional report to Ms. Thompson.
No report this evening.
To Mr. McCann?
No report. Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Finer.
No report, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, sorry, everyone, I know we're going long. I'm just gonna claim my report time a little bit. I do just want to mention um, that the spending guidelines for the stimulus money have been published. Uh, I will make sure that everybody gets a copy of those. They're quite lengthy. Um, but that's something, we don't have the funds yet, but that's something that we are going to be actively working on um, in the near future, given that we now have the guidelines. So we'll make some determinations as to what is eligible for reimbursement for those past incurred expenses. And then um, it will be broken up into two pieces, $125,000 this year, about $125,000 next year, with a spending deadline of, I believe, September of 2023. Uh, so more to come there, but I will get those guidelines out to everyone. Alright, uh, we do have some presenters this evening. Our friends from Experience Yardley are still with us. I think we have some business regarding some ducks.
Hi, this is Liz Young. I'm here with Cindy Fatsis. I'm just trying to get my um, video going. We are here to talk to you about ducks. Yes, a sculpture walk um, is what we have in mind, and we've been busy since the last time we were here, and we have been, we've spent some time with the manufacturer, going through specifications, installation instructions, safety questions, painting instructions. And um, we have been working with a small team of folks to make sure that we're all comfortable with where we're going. And I thought it would be important to let you know that our next steps are to begin gathering sponsors, um, working through our funding requests, and working through locations. And that's kind of the update that I have. Cindy, anything I need to add?
I just want to say that we are, um, we've been working with Uri and, and Paula uh, on our steering committee. Um, so we do feel that um, you know, we, we feel happy and excited about being aligned on the project, and it's looking good.
Thank you. Good to hear. Um, you know, I think I've probably most heard this project combined, or like compared to a couple years ago when New Hope's had the, uh, I think they had donkeys in New Hope. And that's something that people still talk about. So I like the idea that, you know, this could be sort of a fun thing that people in town could come to see, would talk about, you know, any attention that we can get here in Yardley is good. Uh, Mr. Finer, see your hand.
Well, yeah, just as the liaison to this group, uh, I just want to thank Experience Yardley for the work that you're doing. There's a lot of energy you're putting into this, um, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is. Just, you know, really working closely with the borough and just put, um, doing all you can to make it successful. I know it's gonna be successful because I see what you're putting into it. Uh, and I've been honored to be part of the process with you, and I also want to thank Paula, because she's been there at these meetings, giving feedback, taking input. It's just a really good example of how the borough can work with the public to create um, a great community project. So I'm really excited, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are at the end of our regularly scheduled business. So for formality, I'll ask, is there any other item that a council member or the mayor wished to bring before council? I do see you, Chris. Go ahead.
Two seconds. I just wanted to congratulate the community and council on a meeting that had discussion, and, you know, we need more of that in, in, in everywhere in what we do, and I think the council handled it great. I think the community handled it great. Different people had different opinions, and everybody just talked about them. So whatever the outcome was, I just think that was an example of, of way meetings should go. So thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Um, government can work sometimes, so let's do some more of that around here. Uh, alright, so with that, I'll ask for one last motion. It's a motion to adjourn. Who wants it?
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Someone has to second it up.
Come on, don't you want to keep going for a few more hours?
I'm assuming you're all going with aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Good show and have a good night.